All right, we'll call the meeting to order at 7:02. Please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A moment of silence, please. Thanks very much. I would entertain a motion to approve the January 11 school board meeting minutes.
On that?
It's their second.
Second.
Two seconds. Any changes, additions, deletions, corrections? Seeing none, all in favor of approving as presented? Opposed? Abstentions? More abstains? I would entertain a motion to approve the school board meeting minutes of January 21, 2013. Jenny moves.
Second.
Diane seconds. For all of you speed readers out there, all in.
I'd like to introduce a change to the minutes.
Please.
In the third sentence of the elementary facility committee report, in the section where I mentioned how many meetings are left, I'd like that sentence to read. Jennifer stated that the full board has three meetings until the vote. Currently, it says the committee.
Any other changes? All in favor of approving the motion as presented? Opposed? Abstentions?
Yes.
More abstains? And I would entertain a motion to approve the school board meeting minutes of January 25, 2013. Jenny moves.
I'll second.
Diane seconds. Changes, additions, deletions, corrections? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as presented? Opposed?
Yes.
Abstentions? In the correspondence folder, you have the weighty task of reading through four substitute Commendations and good news.
Recently, Team 5-1 at MBMS collected 178 items to benefit the nonprofit Families in Transition. Some of the items collected were toothbrushes, blankets, pillows, dishes, diapers, soap, and baby bottles. They also collected a $100 gift card to Hannaford. This was a positive team-building experience, and some students are hoping to make it an annual family tradition. So it's nice to see. And the music department, Ms. Orca, has arranged for eight string students to perform at the American String Teacher Association National Conference in Providence, Rhode Island, on Saturday, March 2nd, and they will be performing for a workshop presentation on how to introduce jazz to middle school students. And the spelling bee was just completed this past week, and the winner was Madeline Short. She's a 7th grader. There were 32 other participants from grades 5 through 8. And I guess there was a sort of a duel towards the end with the last two contestants. They had to go 11 rounds.
Wow, my goodness.
So it was like they had a big duel. The kids coming back were pretty close.
Is there anybody, before you answer this question, if you can, is there anybody who is willing to volunteer to try to spell whatever the winning word was without knowing what it is?
I don't know what it was.
Oh, no.
I was trying to find it out. I kept asking other kids, like, what was the word? I don't remember. They were going on forever.
Thank you very much.
I have good news from elementary schools from Maple. There were 62 4th graders who participated in the National Assessment of Educational Progress last week. This test provides a common measure of student achievement across the country, and the results are released as part of the nation's report. Also, our student council had a pet food drive in January. They collected food and toys for the Manchester Animal Shelter, and the school also made a donation of $120 to the shelter. And in our music department, Mr. Landano and Mrs. Swatter, 1 of our 4th grade teachers, are putting on a show chorus program with the 4th grade students. They meet with interested 4th graders twice a week to rehearse music and choreography for a springtime performance, and the students are learning selections from popular Broadway shows. This activity is funded by a grant Mr. Landano received last spring, the Nighting the Classroom Walker Grant. And on Wednesday, the 6th, at 6:30, there will be a presentation on the elementary building renovation addition projects, and the presentation will be held at the Maple Avenue gym. This will be an opportunity for Maple Avenue families to hear information about the proposed project before the March 12 vote. And from Glen Lake, on January 23rd, one of the coldest nights of the year, Glen Lake had 270 people brave the subzero temperature to participate in their family literacy night. So kudos to the literacy night chairpersons, Kendra Tisker, Julie Lefale, and Brenda White for their excellent performance. And a big, big thank you to Kathy Kleagle for chairing another successful Week 1 book fair that both enhances and supports student literacy and the family literacy night. The proceeds from the book fair fund, purchase, fund the purchased books that are then given away to all the students and their siblings during the literacy night.
Thank you very much. Good goings on.
Okay, at the high school, fairly recently, the music department organized the first uncommunitized music festival. There were a lot of schools involved, and it was very successful. The English department recently organized Poetry Out Loud, a very engaging competition on Maureen Brown and her colleagues. It was a great opportunity for a lot of students, and congratulations to Dee Etienne, who won, and the runners-up were Jen Cashin and Ethan Conley. Also, we also took part in the NEAT testing, a selection of seniors this past Friday. Our NEAT cap results just came in, and they are looking very good for the fourth string National Honor Society members were recently inducted, and each year they honor an outstanding educator at the high school. And this year was Ms. Lisa Mayu, the health teacher, and she's also the co-advisor of the class of 2013 and the yearbook co-advisor. And students spoke with a bunch of admiration for her and her dedication and commitment and passion that she's brought to GHS since 1985. At the library, they're continuing to do a lot of great stuff. They just set up a PENPAL situation with Botswana teens, and there's almost 40 students registered to participate in that. There also, there's always new exhibits, and we are, I teach 9th grade world history, and we're collaborating with very hot with research skills, and we're doing a lot of great and innovative and exciting stuff. There's also a lot of clubs and advisors doing a lot of great stuff. For example, Agents of Change, it's a student-directed, they're working on an anti-bullying video, and my leadership class was involved in helping out a little bit. We did some filming in my classroom, and supposedly it's going to be more exciting than Brian's.
I'll have to put them head-to-head in a competition.
One comment, because it's important to highlight these things. Almost weekly, but absolutely this week, in each one of the things that you had to tell us, there was some element of voluntary, student-generated, student-created community service, either to our own communities or other communities. It shows that one of the lessons that our students get and participate in and have the opportunity to participate in is civic engagement and community service. So thank you for keeping us and the entire community aware of those goings-on in our schools, and it's terrific that our students have those opportunities. More good news.
Yes. So for art, the Scholastic Art Awards were announced, and there are many winners, as always. We usually have a really good amount of student work that win awards, and I actually have a sheet that has the winners. And I highlighted the Gold Keys, which is the top prize, and the Gold Key portfolios, which means a student, a senior, puts together a portfolio of work, and that's judged as a whole. And there were a few of them who won some really good prizes for that. For track?
Can I interrupt you for just one second? Jenny, may I?
Yes, oh, absolutely.
And then I'll hand it around so everybody can read it. I just want to make sure I'm right. So, the award winners from Goffstown, are they highlighted in yellow?
No, the, all the people listed under Goffstown
Oh, okay.
are award winners, but the Gold Key is the top prize that you can win, and the GKP just means a Gold Key portfolio. That's all I meant.
Oh, my goodness.
Look at Mr. Julian.
Yes, we usually have a really...
So, this isn't going to be easy. It's going to take just a second, but if I may, because this is as important a part of the curriculum here for these students probably as any other piece. So it's worth recognizing the fact that these folks have engaged in something that they're passionate about and have received awards for it. And do me a favor, if you hear me mispronounce a name, anybody who knows it correctly, please correct me. Allison Bouchard, Brittany Brown, Lauren Boyle, Neil Hadley, Laura King.
Kia Kumujian.
Kumujian?
Yeah, it's something like that.
Kia Kumujian, I hope I pronounced that right, Kia. Scott Shat, Kendra Simes, Jessica Wa, excuse me?
Semes.
Semes, thank you. Jessica Wallace, Amanda Juarez.
Juarez.
Juarez. Yeah, I'm going to invoke Jim Raymond's.
Yeah, 175.
I didn't prepare to do this, but I think it's important to do, so forgive me, and we'll get it right. Catherine Dixon, Molly Kate Fanning, Erin Hussey, Seir Mosqua, Samantha Mirdek, Melissa Roy, Elizabeth Sykes, Kelsey Steele, I hope I pronounced that right, Emily Tentis, Amanda Wills, Kristen Veneman, Georgia Kane, Mackenzie Chu, Victoria Garcia, Indy Riley, Lauren Boyle, Marissa Grassit, Erin Hussey, Megan Jones, Haley Metz, and everybody else is a repeat. And congratulations to all of you, again, for passion, good work, and winning your awards. Go ahead.
All right, so yesterday, there was the indoor state track and field meet, and we have a couple of very exciting wins. Annie McGibben placed 7th, and Cody Murphy placed 12th in the 3,000 meter. Brooke Simmons placed 2nd on high jump, and she is also the new state champion for long jump.
That's wonderful.
And Michelle Trembley is the new state champion in the 300 meter. So we have two new state champions, which is very exciting.
What a great day for them.
Yes. Also, report cards went out today. And for student council, we have had a couple of community service committee dates where we went to the Hillsborough County Nursing Home on January 14th, and the Villager visit on January 30th. And actually, at the Villager, we brought a craft. We did a Valentine's Day craft where we made, I should have brought an example, but it's called Swedish hearts, and it's like you take two pieces of colored paper, and you make slits in it, and you weave it in, and it becomes a little basket. And so we put candy in it for them, and we were there for an hour, and we helped them make the craft and everything, and it was really, really great. They loved it, and the kids really enjoyed it. And actually, a couple of kids from outside of student council came and joined us, which was really good. And actually, a couple of them were singing, and then everyone started singing, and it was really, really great, and I think they really enjoyed it. For winter carnival, student council is into preparation for that. Each of the classes has already started working on each of their skits, and the assembly is Friday, February 22nd, so Friday before vacation.
So, I heard some people went swimming over the weekend.
I guess they did.
I got that on my report.
You got that on your report? All right, leave it to you. It could be good news. Is there any other good news or commendations? Jenny?
I just want to point out that Goffstown High School's list for the art awards is pretty near twice anybody else's on this list. The other thing is, is I went to Glen Lake's literacy night. What a ball. Oh, my goodness, the little projects they had for the kids and the stories, very well done, and I had as much fun as the kids did. It really is a fun way to get families into the school to see what's going on, families to look at books and see projects related to books, what they can do with stories at home with their kids. It was really a fun night.
And I believe they almost get like 100% participation.
Yeah, and their brothers and sisters come that participate too, and you have little tiny ones, and you have big...
About 20, 50% participation rate, actually.
Big brothers and sisters that are there doing their little crafts too. It's really a fun, fun night.
Any other commendations and good news? Seeing none. Public comment? No public comment this evening. Standing committee reports? Human resources?
We meet next Monday at 5:30. If anybody on the committee can't make it for 5:30, please let me know so we can have a call. Thank you. 5:30. 5:30.
I was looking through our policies, and I'm wondering if we might want to add a review of a technological device policy?
We already have, yeah, there's, I don't mean to injure...
Is it on there?
The tech committee has been reviewing our acceptable use policy, and it is at the attorney's office right now being reviewed, and it has all those, we've updated it to include not BYOD, but we have, we do have an alternate network on who can access that, and so starting to think about those things.
Because it occurs to me that bringing on device, that devices have changed so much, even in the last six years, and we have 2nd graders who have devices that have internet access and have memory, and stuff can get downloaded at home and then come to school and be shared, that there is no way would be approved.
Right. So we've looked at the acceptable use policy, the committee, we will eventually, the committee will eventually start talking about BYOD, bring your own device, for those who don't know. There's lots that goes into thinking about that and how we do it. We are set up and ready to go with it, and we would likely pilot it probably at the high school to start with, but there's lots of things we need to think about, and the committee needs to think about before we go there. But the updated policy will start to look at those pieces and set some parameters for things. So I think we sent it off to the attorney's office to look at, to see if there were some changes on like social media policies that we wanted them to look at to make sure we weren't, we were within our parameters of what we were putting in the policy, so that I think probably next month you may see that.
Yeah, it was mentioned that IT is still looking at it, and then it will be reaching us.
Cool. All right.
Thank you. Diane, communication?
PNC met tonight, and finally, we were able to get to our committee description. And we didn't change it a lot, but we did add in that we do tend to, we're the committee that brings for nomination like a scholarship award or like the cornerstone of the dream keeper. We did change our goals to not be the long-term strategic plan simply, not because it's not a good idea, but because it's something that the committee has not been able to effectively do, so we're focusing on short-term. And then we're continuing with the goal of developing and overseeing the community information program. So not big changes there, but just some fine tuning. Other than that, our next meeting will be first Monday of next month.
Jenny Kirk, Education, did not meet?
We are meeting on Monday, Monday, the 11th.
7 o'clock in the SAU.
SAU. And I will follow up on invitations to Nabastin and Dunbar and school boards to make sure they're aware of the meeting and know that they're invited to attend.
Sure, thank you. Budget committee report?
Budget committee met briefly after a deliberative session on Saturday, and the decision, there are no changes related to recommendations per the deliberative session. They'll have another short meeting at the end of the town deliberative session on Wednesday. Otherwise, the next regular meeting is the second Tuesday tomorrow.
So for anybody who's watching, the town deliberative session Wednesday in the auditorium, 7 o'clock. I encourage you to go. Also, I will, if I haven't mentioned it before in the last, Diane to elaborate, I had the opportunity to speak with Peter Chorjantis, who was good enough to chair the budget committee this year. Much to Peter's credit and management style, he ran wonderfully inclusive meetings, gave everybody in the room the opportunity to speak whenever there was a need to speak, regardless of whether or not they were at the table. He facilitated discussions where there was a healthy exchange of information, where everybody got to speak, regardless of what information there was, they had to share, which is important to the community and important to the process. And I want to and will continue to applaud Peter, and Diane, you were there, so you know more than I, so if there's anything you want to add, feel free to.
You've articulated it quite well. They were, it was very open, it was very active dialogue, and it helped too that we did have members of administration, principals, and whatnot available at the relevant budget committee meetings, and it really, very open question and answer. It was very, very fruitful, for sure.
And that's a top-down kind of thing, and again, thanks to Peter.
No, absolutely.
Elementary Facility Committee report?
Tomorrow is our next meeting. We're here in this building at 5:30 in the principal's conference room. We have several upcoming places we're going to be. Wednesday, we will be at Maple Ave PFT doing a presentation. We plan on doing a similar presentation at Bartlett. I've forgotten the date, but it's coming. We also plan on setting up tables at basketball games just outside, just if people want to come by, check out the boards. We have handouts to give.
We started that last Thursday.
Yeah. So...
Do you need any hands-on deck from this table who aren't already there? I mean, because if you do, now's the time to get people to come in.
As far as I know, at our last meeting, we were able to get subcommittee members to agree to show up. I can certainly relay the dates and locations of places coming, and certainly more is always better to show support for the elementary.
So if you can just circulate the dates, I will recirculate or circulate them.
It's this Tuesday and Thursday and...
I'm not going to...
Yeah, I think the biggest thing the board can do if you're not on that committee is to continue to talk about it. I mean, if you need, we have tons of those handouts, those brochures. If you need brochures, we have the full packet, we have just the inside, which is just about the building project, so swing by the SAU office, take a stack of them, and hand them out. I think that's the biggest thing that this board can do right now, is get the word out about the projects, so people are informed when they come to vote.
So I go to Shop and Save, I'll take some, and maybe go to Shaw's, and not to put on cars, mind you, but...
Yeah.
We have some big ones going.
In the next couple of days, we have some big ones that are going to go into businesses in the community, which basically show the both sides of the inside page, which doesn't save particularly supportive, but gives information on the two projects. So those are going to start going up in businesses today and tomorrow, Wednesday.
I too was at the literacy night with the sign boards for Bartlett and Maple Ave Elementary School renovations, and I had very interesting conversations with parents, most of whom were very excited about the proposal. Only one person was not excited, but most people were really interested and very inquisitive and asking questions and really getting into dialogue with me in a positive way about what was potentially coming. And I told them to tell their two friends and so on and so on.
So is there value in trying to, as sort of either a rehearsal or as a post-event event, doing something on GTV?
The PFT meeting will be GTV recorded.
Terrific, good idea.
I've rejected them, and I'm hoping they'll, I'm waiting for them to get back to me. They thought they could do it, but I'm just waiting for confirmation.
We got the note from the cameraman, so...
Oh, good.
Thank you.
All right, Ted.
Write that down as a note to confirm.
Thank you again. Does that cover it?
For the moment.
Okay. A and F?
A and F goes right into the next one. The only thing that we dealt with was the manifest, so we're bringing forward the total manifest of $1,234,167.40.
Is there a motion to move that forward? Jenny, second? Lori?
And Ray can explain it.
The fine art of...
It's a lot of money. It's a lot of money. Single payroll on this manifest. Payroll taxes and benefit payments amounted to $874,801.55. Special education expenses for this particular period, we had payments to Crotchet Mountain, mounting to $25,186.67, and to the Spalding Youth Center for $6,809. General expenses for this period, heating oil, it was a very cold stint here, heating oil, we spent $39,658.89. These are for January deliveries to Mountain View, Goffstown High School, and to Maple Avenue, three schools there. Our regular payment to Goffstown Truck Center for regular education transportation, $96,628. Honeywell, we had a payment, this was a quarterly payment on the maintenance contract. It's the sum total for all schools in the district that amounted to $11,679. We had payments to public service for Mountain View and Goffstown High School only, amounting to $19,441. Our monthly business machine lease payable to Rico, $7,395. And the last payment was to United Rentals for $8,595. That was for the purchase of the scissors lift to be used here at the high school and at Mountain View. Those are the highlights.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the motion as presented? Opposed, abstentions, or unanimous? Suzanne?
Yes.
Was that a yes vote? Thank you. Since it's, I suppose there are about six different places I can do this, I missed the place that I should have done it. January 21st, 2013, the motion to approve the manifest that was voted on was 9/18/034. The manifest, in fact, was 9/18/034.09. We need to either correct the vote, or correct, or direct by vote today to pay the manifest the amount of 9/18/034.09 on the record, because as it stands, we're out of balance.
So the motion was, actually, it's not a typo, the motion actually was not with the nine cents?
It wasn't with the nine cents. It actually was 9/18/034.
So you could probably just make a motion to approve the nine cents?
I'll make it.
I'm confident the second said that.
Might as well give you the nine cents.
Okay, wait a second. Okay, wait a second. One, two, three, four, yeah, we can't divide that evenly.
I feel kind of foolish making that motion.
It's a, it's a matter of doing our business correctly.
Yeah.
Sarbanes-Oxley would be upset.
So the motion for not to add nine cents to the manifest as approved on January 21st?
1/21/2013. Jenny made the motion. Jennifer seconded. All in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Abstentions done. We're good. Thank you very much. Moving right along, we've done manifest and vouchers. Was there anything else from A&amp;F?
Nothing else from that committee today.
Thank you very much. Superintendent's report?
A couple things. Yesterday, on Sunday, I bravely took a dove in the Atlantic Ocean along with 40 or so other Goffstown representatives. It was quite chilly. I would like to thank Jen Gillis and Jessica Milligan, Assistant Principal at the Middle School, and Maple Ave, who also accompanied me on that venture. It was snowing when we did it, and we all three went in totally, Jessica went under, I did not go under. So cool.
And having heard that, I would like to thank everybody at this table who didn't agree to accept my challenge, because I was really nice and warm.
Jill did it yesterday. And I would also add that the students, on Saturday, they do the high school plunge. And we had, I think, at least 30 students who went, and so the majority of that money goes right back to our Special Olympics team here. So it's a, it was, it's a wonderful event. It's, it's, just to go out there, you're kind of just, it's, it's bitter cold, it's, it was 18 degrees yesterday, it was snowing, water temperature was 41. It's not going in, it's getting out, that's the cold part. But the excitement, it really is for a good cause, and I think I read in the paper $600,000 was raised for Special Olympics, so it really is.
How much?
It's 600,000.
Nice.
So if you've never gone, as an adult, for Sunday, you have to raise a minimum of $350. Student Day is a minimum of $150, so for a student to have to raise that, I mean, that's pretty significant. So it was a great time had by all. I would like to thank Melissa Kelleher and Tammy Pinnard, who kind of are, kind of the team captains who organized this all, from getting us hooked up to our webpage that you have to do for donations, to making sure where they're on time, getting us in and out of where we need to be, here's when the parade, because they do a parade, here's where you have to be when you go in, and so they really keep us organized. And that's not an easy thing to do when you're at the, the ballroom at Hampton Beach where there's thousands of people, and everybody's running around and trying to get, you know, 40 or 50 people of a group into a picture and to get that done. So I commend both of them for their efforts and their organization, it really, they do a nice job. Today, I spent the day at a conference. This morning, we talked about several of the, the chairs for both the Senate and the House. Education Committee came and talked about all the current legislation that's in, currently going through, and kind of the thoughts on where things are. They were looking for our input and feedback, so it was a nice session. And then this afternoon, we talked about the healthcare law and all the requirements going into this next year, as far as what we have to offer and how you, how you look to see if you're offering the right programs and the right funding formula and the penalties involved and all of that as we move into requirements for 2014 and 2015. So I'll be meeting with the S.A.U. administration to look at that, make sure we're, we're in compliance, but I think we're pretty good. Kneecap scores came out this week. We did pretty well. I haven't gotten the full reports, we're still analyzing all the data, looking at them and comparisons, and so probably at your next meeting, I'll have some more information on that, but we are diving right into them.
I know my junior was very excited about his not needing to take final exams.
The kids at the high school, so I, I've never seen kids more excited to get test scores, but they, we have, we have created such a wonderful atmosphere here at the high school about the kneecap test, that when they announced the test scores were in and kids could come to the office and pick them up, there was literally a pile at the door to get their test scores. You don't see that. It's just, it's just such a nice thing that kids are excited to see how they did, so I will add that. Kate McGrath, our new HR Director, is starting tomorrow, so if you're around, you know, feel free to stop in and welcome her, so she'll be here first thing in the morning. In the beginning of the year, actually at the end of last year, I gave all the subcommittees a little form to fill out on their roles and responsibilities. I would ask you to take that out, if you, if you are a Chair of a committee, to please look at that, try to get that to me. I would really, really, really like to get those to the board for approval, to say, yes, this is what we believe our committee should be doing, particularly as we start to think now about elections and we're going to have new committee assignments. It would be really nice for all the board members to have a copy of what the committees do, so that when you sign up for something, you actually have a really good, reasonable sense of what your responsibility is, how often they meet, and what you can expect out of that committee. So I would really encourage anybody who's a Chair of a committee, if you need the little sheet again, let me know and I'll get that to you, but to try to get those done and...
My sheet's with MC, so if I could get another.
Okay.
I remember what we talked about, but I forget the wording.
You know what, I'll send it out to all the board chairs.
We changed the name. The biggest thing is we're changing the name.
Yep, so I just, I want to try to get it before elections to the board so that you guys can approve them, and that we can start off with new chairs and new committees, kind of fresh and clean, if here's where we're going. And I think I was... Go ahead. Get to the bottom of my file.
We've done manifest and vouchers. Follow-up to deliberative session? Bring your men. Good evening.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm being late.
Getting a little tired.
Did the devils send you a note for being late?
No. No worries.
She makes her decisions on that side and we just make them happen.
Stacy, are you going to be discussing the open houses for the area agreements at some point in the future of this meeting?
Yes, I'm actually, well, so on, what I can tell you is what I have right now. So on the 11th, I think it's Monday, hold on, let me, the 11th is Monday. Yes, on Monday, and I know it conflicts with HRC and E, but on Monday, we will have a tour, Mountain View tours, for, this is for Dunbarton parents. And then on the 19th are the tours for Goffstown High School. The plan right now is from, they start at 7:00, from 7:00 to 7:15, we're going to meet in a central location, I think here at the library at Mountain View, I think we're doing in the cafeteria. I'm going to do a brief 15-minute overview of the school district, kind of a PowerPoint about what we do, what each school does. We're going to have multiple people doing tours, so I think we have administrators mostly going to do those. We've set it up so that it's pretty consistent through each tour, so that everybody's kind of talking about the same thing. Part of this is we have no idea if we're going to get 10 people or 150 people, so we have multiple people kind of, so what I've asked the principals to do is to bullet kind of, here's what the tour looks like, here's the classrooms you should visit, and here's what you should talk about in each one, so that they're consistent. And then we're going to have, so we're giving them an hour for the tours, we're going to have them come back to the same location for kind of a Q and A period of time. I've sent out an email to all the staff, asking them if they'd like to be there, they're more than welcome, can't force them to be there, but that it would be a nice opportunity for them, to just be available, not really have anything to do, but just be available. We thought during that Q and A time, people could just kind of mill around as well and just talk to teachers if they had questions about, you know, algebra, or they had questions about foreign language or whatever, be available for them. So that's kind of the thing, I'm working on some snack foods.
Just, just out of curiosity, will, will people be arriving all masks?
Oh, I have no idea. I, I haven't, I mean, there's no sign up, so we, I mean, it starts at 7:00, so we're assume, we're putting it out there that it's at 7:00, so don't come at 7:30 for the tour, come at 7:00 because there'll be a presentation before that, and so that's how we're hoping that people will show up.
I, I had a conversation with a member of the public who made, I thought, an excellent suggestion at both of these open houses. It would be really great to showcase student groups, student council and, and other, you know, FBLA and even the sports teams.
Yeah, we'll talk, I will talk about like what we offer. There, I mean, the downside, there's a, first off, there's a limited amount of time we have that night.
Right.
And then there's a limited amount of time that I have to plan this.
Right.
So again, I would encourage board members to be there, you know, it would be nice, there'll be opportunities at the end during the Q and A time if board members want to speak or answer questions. But we're going to try to keep it focused on the middle school and then focus on the high school and kind of point to pride, what are we, you know, what are we doing to increase achievements, talk a little bit about our test scores, because that has come up, so I'm trying to highlight the things that have come up as questions that board members have. I know the high school, I think, is looking at some student, having some students here as well, and I think the theater, they're all actually rehearsing, so they offered maybe an opportunity for us to go in and see that as well, so...
What day is this?
The high school's on the 19th, so we'll also be full swing of winter carnival, so there'll be lots of excitement and lots of things happening in our schools, which is kind of nice for them to see as well. But if anybody has ideas or wants to help out, feel free to send me an email if you want to do something specific.
Recommendation of warrants?
Can I just, um...
Yes.
Just kind of follow up on the deliberative session. I just wanted to make a comment that I thought the presentations that people from the board gave to explain the warrant articles, I think everybody did a really good job and that some really good information was put out to the public. Too bad more people weren't there to receive it, but...
To help the watch on GTV.
Here's the good news.
Hat on the back to everybody.
Ted was there?
He was.
And he's going to make sure it gets televised.
An commendation that I should have made pertinent to the deliberative session too is that the cornerstone award was given, the shared deliberative session, to Gail Kenny for her outstanding, over and above work at Glen Lake School. And the Dream Keepers Award was given to Mountain View's PBIS leadership team for their outstanding work and their presentations to set up the program at Mountain View.
And I'm in the process of getting them together, I talked to Brian today, to get them together, to get some pictures so we can send some press releases out for both of them.
Okay.
So recommendations of warrants was really if something changed, you have the right to re-vote on your recommendations?
New business? FBLA State Leadership Conference request?
This is a repeat conference, but it's an overnight, not an out of state, and it's just for the FBLA State Leadership to go to the Radisson, it's a two-night, two-day conference, the 28th and 29th, and the students. It's a wonderful conference, a great opportunity for our students. We always do really well in the competitions, and it's paid for by fundraising and some student contribution, but it's a fairly reasonable overnight trip. We have three staff going.
Make a motion to...
No motion, that's a yes though.
Anticipated participants?
I don't know. It's usually a good, it's usually a group of 10 to 12, it's really a pretty good group, echo. Oh, 18, I'm sorry, I have the number right there. 18 GHS, FBLA students.
Any other questions? Seeing revised school district calendar?
So this is just an FYI, when we did the school district calendar, we put, had the wrong week for Thanksgiving vacation, so nothing really has changed other than we've moved Thanksgiving to the actual Thanksgiving day.
Wait a second.
We were thinking it was the third Thursday.
You're calling relocated Thanksgiving after a few hundred years.
So I just wanted, in case, in case anybody had seen the old one, we have revised it to Thanksgiving actually being on Thanksgiving, so just wanted to let you know that. Snow date update. This is just an FYI, and we have more information perhaps at your next meeting. I'm getting a little worried because we are just in the beginning of February, and we technically only have two days left to make snow days up, because we have three days, but New Boston has a teacher workshop day at the end of the year, so we have to take that into consideration. So we technically have two days, which makes me really, really worried. So my thought is to put a plan in place, because if a plan is in place, that means we will have no more snow. If I don't plan something, we'll have a blizzard and we'll lose five more days. So I'm going to put out and have a conversation with our administrators at our next meeting about April vacation, about adding time on, what, what is the best discussion so that we can then move that on to teachers and have some dialogue around what people are thinking to perhaps at your next meeting. So the board, none of the, the other two boards won't meet until the beginning of March, so we'll have a better feel at that point, kind of what we've had in February, so whether we need to actually bring a proposal forward in March for something to make up some days. So no, that's just out there, I want to make sure people recognize it's out there, that I'm worried about only having two more days.
So you're going to account for that snow date or in the first week of April that we have?
Yeah, so it, yeah, it makes me a little worried.
Teacher nominations? Diane, go first.
So I'm passing along, we have two teacher nominations to bring forward. These are just till the end of the year positions only, they will go back out and open up, these are for two teachers. One was a resignation and one is a long-term leave of absence that the board approved at the end of your last meeting.
I have to share.
Oh, there's probably too many webinars. I'm bringing forward a, Richard Mitchell as the teacher to fill the rest of the position for in alt ed. And I'm bringing forward Caitlin Kofink as the English teacher here at Goffstown High School. Richard Mitchell comes in at a master's step seven, and Caitlin comes in at a bachelor step one.
She has no previous experience, or is she substituted for us here?
She's, she has actually been a para educator who's finishing up her teacher certification. She's actually been the long-term sub in there right now, so, and she's done a really nice job, so.
Is she in the wrong? The name looks familiar.
It's Kofink, I believe.
Yeah.
Yep.
There's not many, I would think. There's not many, I would think.
She lives in Goffstown, it doesn't say on the registration, but...
I have a feeling she's wrong.
Any, any questions? Would entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion to approve both Richard and Caitlin.
Jenny, seconds. All in favor?
Aye. Opposed?
Abstentions? Were you...
I'm going to bring in three, forward three co-curriculars. Jody Coats for Mountain View Wrestling is a repeat, Matt Fleming, Goffstown High School varsity softball, and Josh Lewis for high school varsity boys lacrosse, and those are completely new.
Matt Fleming, Matt Fleming's been doing some coaching for softball.
Yeah, he may have done something else, yeah, he maybe have been a JV or an assistant or...
Is Wonderfire varsity coach leaving? Or not coming back?
I'd have to ask.
I know Matt Fleming's done something with softball before, I don't know if it was...
That's too much detail.
Would entertain a motion?
This small letter N after the name.
It's new.
New, new representative.
Yeah, I had them start doing that because the board would always ask me who was new.
The individual is new.
Yes, yes. New to, yeah. Like Josh Lewis is a teacher in the district, just it's new to that position.
Would entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Seconded by Diane.
Matt was a JV softball coach last year.
I knew he coached.
And Josh was, Josh was JV lacrosse.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Give me a moment.
And just notification, we have several student interns coming from St. A's. Alexandria Lawrence will be at Glen Lake, Nicholas Markcott, Alyssa Ultimus, Jessica Doe, Erin Marshall, Danielle Semen Telly, and Ashley Alox will be all at Bartlett Elementary School, and Keewy Wyman will be at Glen Lake.
So where are they going to squeeze these people into Bartlett? No, we're already in there like sardines.
Do they rotate between grades or do they have specific grades?
They typically work with, an intern is different than a student teacher, so typically they're just observing, they're just helping out, supporting, they're not actually teaching.
I can actually speak to that. I work with the Education Department at St. Anson College, and it depends on which class they're taking, but most of these names I recognize as elementary ed track students, so they are taking courses specific to elementary education.
Any other business that may legally come before the board? Seeing none.
Are we going into non-helping?
You could.
Okay.
It'll take all of that a minute and a half. Okay. Would you entertain a motion to go into non-helping?
I'll make that motion for personnel reasons.
Oh, oh, you guys can go. While we're shutting down, let's take your picture.
That's all right. Nobody's seconding it yet. I didn't hear anybody seconded, so that's all that's here.
Haven't heard it.
So we can take a picture.
And we want everybody to be in this picture, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, teacher, Megan.